Thanks Christina. At six o'clock, so we'll start the meeting and do the blood. Blood allegiance?
Blood, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christina, do the roll call.
Fish.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Lawrence.
Here.
Steen.
Here.
Mayor Buck.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, we'll move forward and look for any additions or corrections to the agenda. Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have approval of the minutes from the June 1 briefing meeting and June 5 regular council meeting on pages four through 11. I'll look for a motion.
So moved, second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Approval of claims on pages 12 through 14 of the backup material.
Gary, if you might continue, everybody's having a hard time hearing. Please.
Talk louder. It's about as good as I can do. Okay, let's look for the claims, any questions?
Move to approve, second.
Motion and second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. The consent calendar. I'll look for a motion. Nothing really on it, is there? Okay, we move forward. Visitors and timed items, this is an opportunity for anybody that would like to address the council on any particular item, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. If there's something that's on the agenda, you might want to wait until then, but you can do it now. We do allow only five minutes per person, so... Your name? Excuse me?
Can we speak at the time of the adjournment?
Yes, I just said that.
Well, I'll mix it up and get ahead of ourselves.
Name and address?
Yes. Mayor, council, I appreciate this time to speak tonight. My name is Scott Carbono. I live at 201 South Country Club Avenue, and I'd like to address the proposed development, the Aspen Ridge development, that has been discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission level and has now been moved up to the council level. I want to make it very clear tonight that I am very strongly in favor of growth and development. In a previous life, I served as the city of Pierce's Community Development Director, and following my time with the municipality, I served on their Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I understand growth, I understand development, and I really strongly promote it, because a healthy community is one that's growing. You don't have to look very far to see communities that aren't growing. But one of the important steps is to ensure that that growth is both responsible and that it does not impact residents in a negative manner. Safety is a big issue, and the two things that I'm going to try and address real quickly, because I realize we only have five minutes, so I'm going to hope somebody else picks up the ball when I'm done, but safety and infrastructure go hand in hand. And it's really important that we ensure that that infrastructure is in place before we do the development, rather than vice versa, because when you get the development put in, and then you start talking about infrastructure concerns, it can lead to chaos, or even worse, it can lead to a tragic fatality. And I'm thinking mainly about the traffic flow along Country Club Avenue to the intersection of Highway 11. Seventy-two percent of the people who work in Brandon commute in from other areas. And at the same time, eighty-two percent of the people living in Brandon communicate or commute out of the community. It's chaos in the morning, there's a lot of people coming, there's a lot of people going, and it's not just from Brandon, you have people coming from Laverne, you have people coming from Valley Springs. Valley Springs is seeing exponential growth. In 2019 to 20, they grew by about 26%, and that growth is continuing. So Bethany Meadows is continuing to grow, which also has some safety concerns. But anyway, on any given day, according to the Department of Transportation, over 6,000 people or vehicles travel between Country Club Avenue and the intersection of Highway 11. If you travel that route at eight o'clock, or at five o'clock, or a little earlier, because those people have places to go, it's a challenge. It's a challenge when you get down to that intersection, especially if you want to turn to the south, because if you turn to the north, 11,000-plus vehicles are entering and exiting that interchange at I-90 off of Highway 11. It's because they pick up a few in between, but there's people coming from the south, there's people going to the north. My concern is if you add up to 1,000 more people in that area without improving that infrastructure, you're going to add to that challenge. There is no way that children will safely be able to access the swimming pool, the new multi-use facility, the soft baseball diamonds, things that are really important and great quality-of-life facilities. It also creates a danger. At worst, it creates a lot of chaos with people trying to exit and enter both the housing development to the east and the new one proposed on the south. It's the only paved way out of eastern Brandon. And again, I'm very concerned, without any type of infrastructure put in to mitigate the risk, I just think it's a little short-sighted. I know there's been talk about a roundabout at that intersection of Country Club and 11. I think that's a great idea, I think it'll help ease some of that congestion, it'll probably improve the safety, less concern in an accident at that intersection. But the fact is, is that project is not on the current step, the statewide transportation improvement plan. I visited with people in Pier, and not only is it not on that plan, but the earliest that they would probably be able to put a shovel in the ground would be 2028, which would be beyond the point where new apartment complexes, new multifamily housing units would be in place, and that traffic would continue to grow. Again, and I don't want to sound overdramatic, but with that increased traffic comes increased challenges in getting ambulances out to Bethany Meadows, and that's a concern. I live in that area, I hear ambulances all the time, I look out and yep, they're heading down there, it's just a part of life when you're dealing with that type of community. Great community, by the way, and I hope that I stay here long enough to transition to the apartment and then to the nursing home. I hope I'm that fortunate. So that's my main, main concern with the traffic. I know I've probably exceeded my time, and I really appreciate you guys not yanking me out of here, but I will say that I have two other concerns that just, I would like to address publicly. The first...
You're at five minutes.
Okay.
Same rules for everybody.
Yep, I'll give my notes to somebody else, and hopefully they can pick up where I left off, but again, thank you. I support the project, but I want it done responsibly, and I want it done safely, and I think the cart's in front of the horse. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Scott. Anyone else?
My name is Nathan Smith, I live at 316 South Country Club Avenue. I was at the meeting a couple days ago when the committee passed it unanimously to move it to you guys. This is a small group compared to what was here on that night. Not one person dissented on the entire vote. With all of us here speaking our minds, it seemed to go on deaf ears. With that being said, I am not within 300 feet of what's going on, so I was not privy to the beautiful letter that you guys sent from the city. Neither was I privy to the letter that came a day later from the exact same guy saying, "Oh, by the way, these two meetings have now been canceled, don't show up." That makes me a little nervous, that you guys are trying to pull something. Why would you send a letter to a certain amount of people and then send another letter to the exact same people a day later saying, "Don't come. We don't want your dissent, we don't want your opinions." Seems a little shady to me, guys, I'm sorry. I came from Minnesota about a year and a half ago, I know how politics work there, I pray to God it's different here, I really do. I appreciate you guys, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Scott, Nathan.
Good evening. David Hunnimer, I live at 415 South Country Club Avenue, and I got to be honest, I, other than the Germsteads, I'm the next closest house to this whole little project that's been planned. And until just now, I didn't even know letters got sent out, and I'm the closest house. I didn't even know about tonight, if somebody wouldn't have just said, "Oh, hey, by the way, there's city councils," so I think the notification process here is a little bit lacking. So I'm not going to hold any bones. I'm against what this project you got that's getting set up over there. You're going to put multifamily housing and a gas station across that road? That's just insane. Now, if you want to put a single-family development back there where it's not going to be as so congested, I get that. But that current plan, no way. But I also understand that no matter what, whoever talks up here, it isn't going to have a difference, because I've been through this before. So what I am going to ask is, at least, if this is going to move forward, start thinking about the houses and the problems they're going to have. I just went through two years of construction headache when you guys put up lift station right next to my house, and nobody even talked to me about it. I had trees that were plowed up, I had my sprinkler system dug up, and then I had to pay to fix it, picking up construction garbage every day, my entire house covered in dust, rocks, dirt, you name it, for two years, and nobody even stopped over to talk to me about it. And now this is going to happen? So what is everybody going to have to deal with now for the next five years while you're building huge apartment complexes over there to deal with the traffic, the noise, the construction, and everything else? I'm sorry, gentlemen, you guys really do a good job, but on this one, this one did not get thought out, and people did not have good input.
Thank you, David. Next?
Yeah, my name is Larry McPherson, I'm 101 South Country Club. I guess the question I've got is, what was the methodology on coming up with the multifamily apartment and single-family breakdown on how the lots and area was going to be allocated? With the help of Scott back there, he pulled together some stats from 2012 to 2021 where multifamily was about 6% of the permits that were issued, about 26% were apartments, and approximately 68% were single-family. I think based on what we've heard in the zoning, and looking at the maps, we're about 55 multifamily to 45 single-family homes. And I guess it'd be nice to know what that methodology and why it seems to be quite a bit to the right of where it has been historically. And in the 2020 Brandon housing study, one of the comments was that there was a good mix of housing options, so I assume they were using this historical data to come up with that statement. So it looks like that something has kind of changed with this particular development. And also another comment was that overly aggressive or overly passive approach to meeting the objectives can cause problems on other objectives, and they talked about not having too much rental property too. So I know it's not a scientific process, but it does seem that this development has really weighted more toward the, away from single-family and more toward multifamily and apartment living. Let's see, we got another question here. And then I guess to get back to the infrastructure improvement, it would be nice to know what all the plans are and dates, I know the roundabout is now 2028, which I think is a crucial item. You know, is there a project, I know with the new school going in out at the corner of Redwood and Chestnut, obviously that road's not, Redwood to Split Rock is not good. Part of Chestnut is good, are there any dates of when those projects would be coordinated with the city or the district to get pavement to where it's needed? I think that's a big issue, because when they start, when they do shut down the interstate to put the new exchange in, people are going to come on Aspen to get into the eastern part of Sioux Falls, I think that's a given, unless they can, they decide they want to use the exit off the interstate to Veterans Parkway. And then I have a question about the new water tower. Once the new tower goes online, does our capacity support actually go up, or is it just keep a status quo as far as the amount of people? And can that current, when the new setup's up, will that support 500 new homes potentially? So it looks like we've got a lot of growth, and it looks like, you know, your studies for the growth plan, they're projecting what, 408 residences? I would guess we beat that already. I mean, this residence or this group alone is already bigger than that, the Aspen Ridge, so it looks like there's a lot of pressure to make the growth work, the water work, the infrastructure work, and it seems like we're falling behind on making things safe for the kids to travel to school, people to get out of the development. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you for your comments, number of good questions there, and I think that if you contact our city administrator, he can help you with the answers to those questions, or our engineer. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for the first reading of ordinance 689 to rezone 117 East Holly from R2 medium residential to general business on pages 15 to 31. Any discussion or motion?
City or Funding and Zoning Commission held a public hearing at their meeting on Thursday and recommended due pass.
And again, this is just for the dentist shop, not to his lot to the west there, right?
Right, just the dental office.
Just the dental office, Ken.
I'll look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
Motion and second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Full business, we have a second reading of ordinance 683, amending chapter 15-21-1B to change zoning procedure on pages 32 to 34. I'll look for a motion on that.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Second, excuse me, second reading of ordinance 684. Motion and second to approve, the second reading of 684. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Second reading of ordinance 685. I'll look for a motion. Motion and second to approve, the second reading of ordinance 685. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Second reading of ordinance 686, defining public sports venue.
Move to approve, second.
Motion and second to approve, ordinance 686. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next is a second reading of ordinance 687, defining public recreation facilities on page 39. I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve, second.
Motion and second to approve, ordinance 687. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And motion carries. And F is the second reading of ordinance 688, Light Industrial District. Motion and second to approve, ordinance 688. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Standing committee reports, start with the golf course. We have retaining wall project pay application, 43 to 50. I'll look for a motion on that.
Would move to approve, second.
Motion and second to approve the pay application for the golf course. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Parks and Rec, you saw the park report, it's on page 51. Any questions? Any discussion? We'll move on. Public safety, you saw the fire department report, the volunteer fire department continued to do a fantastic job for us, and they're all volunteers. Administration, resolution 13-23, amending the accounting policy. Any discussion on that? Can you give us a little bit of an update?
Sure. We approved this accounting policy back in 2018, since then we had a few staff additions and a few changes that we do, so a lot of it's updating assistant finance officer in there, and then we now allow, we do EFT when we pay vendors, so it's just really updating our current system.
Okay. I'll look for a motion. Motion and second to approve the resolution 13-23, amending our accounting policies. Any discussion?
I've got just one thing here, just an administrative thing, Christina. On page 57, it says mail is picked up by the building inspector unless he is out of the office, just complete verbiage, we may have a building inspector that is not a he at some point in time, so just a thought.
Yep.
Good catch. Okay. Move on to resolution 1423, the 24 to 28, five-year capital improvement plan. This has... Amending the, we have a motion and a second, oh, excuse me. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Sorry about that, motion carries. Number two is a resolution 1423, adopting the capital improvement plan. This has changed some in the last month. I'll look for any discussion. Come on up.
Good evening. Al Kirkaby, 1317 Parkview Place, I sit on the Park Advisory Committee, and just wanted to first thank you all for all the work that's gone into the CIP for the next five years. Appreciate all the focus that the council has given this. There is one item, though, that has dropped from this that I would like to request be reconsidered, to be added in, and that has to do with the second Axon Park access. This is a matter that our committee has been talking about for more than 10 years now, and it's, if not our number one item every year, it's very close to the top each and every year, when we think about the congestion that exists down at the park, as well as the safety issue. I have been going to games out at the park there since my oldest was six years old, and I'm going to date myself here a little bit, in 1996, and I can tell you that over the years, it has only gotten busier out there. Between games, it's quite congested. I feel very bad for the youngest kids that play up on H and I, where the parking is right on both sides of the road, and everybody's trying to get out while they're trying to find a parking space, their parents are, and get safely to the Diamonds. From a safety perspective, I remember, this is about 20 years ago, that we had a tournament going on out at the park, and there was a necessity to evacuate due to severe weather on the way, and it took us well over 30 minutes to get all the cars out of the parking lot just having the single entrance. We were very fortunate that day that there wasn't tornado or anything coming through, but it's always been something that's been a concern of mine and the others on the Park Advisory Committee, that we really need to get that second entrance put in. And I understand the budgetary constraints, and also realize that the entrance doesn't do us any good until there's a street that it can dump onto, but rather than remove it from this proposal, from this layout here, I would ask that at least that second entrance be listed as a placeholder for future consideration, because we all know that, you know, different committees can overturn, you know, we can have turnover, same thing with the council, and I would just hate to see it drop off the radar of everybody. I do believe this is a very important project and well-needed out there. Again, one of the most highest-rated things that we as a committee feel is necessary. I'd also be willing to answer any questions that the council might have.
I don't have any questions. I stopped out there myself Friday night, and my wife and I, and we counted 463 cars. We were in the parking lot, and it wasn't quite full yet, but it was just about full. And so, then I, for the heck of it, I went down and looked at the biggest parking lot in town, and that's the high school, and that parking lot holds twice as many people, but they also have three entrances and three exits. And so it's, any thoughts on the part of the council? Thanks, Al, appreciate you for your time.
I would just like to point out that if you look at the sheet there, about number seven down, Ironwood Extension, that is the placeholder, that's the projected cost, we just don't have any costs at this time that is slated out there. This is a plan that does change every year, and so it's not going to be forgotten about, but when we're going to be able to do that, is the question. But it does have a placeholder.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else have any comments on this? Anything from the council? Your thoughts? It appears to me that it's off of the capital improvement list. Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
Right, it's not on the next five-year plan.
That's what I meant.
We do look at this on a yearly basis, so it's not like it couldn't go back on there. It's just not slated for 2024.
Or 2028.
At this point and beyond.
But it could be added next year again, so it could be 2025, 26.
Or it could not be. Right now, the vote is to take it off. To take the funding off.
It's not included in the 2024 through 2028 CIP plan.
Correct.
As a project to be done.
Right now, we're voting to take it off. It was on before.
Brian, did we ever have it scheduled on any particular year in a previous plan? I'd have to go back and look at the prior plans, I don't think it's ever been scheduled as a project, it's there to show what the current cost estimate is, just like core area 5A and B, core area 4A and B, and the Rushmore projects, they're all listed in there so that we can keep track of them, but they're not slated to be done at this point in time.
So this is something that we can come back to next year during our CIP planning, and if we decide that the money is there, we could plug it in for... So this is something that we can come back to next year during our CIP planning, and if we decide that the money is there, we could plug it in for twenty-five or twenty-six.
Correct. Certainly can. You know, it's, it's, it's been looked at as a special assessment project. We, we gave you this special assessment process at the last council meeting. You know, that, that plays into it as well as just a project. There's special assessments that need to be considered and a whole special assessment process to go through.
Any other thoughts?
I was, I was also down there, uh, the other day during the baseball, and it is crowded. Uh, there is no doubt about it. I don't think there's probably enough parking for, given the, the crowds there, but, um, it is a project that I do support. I think we probably have to wait until, I, I, I don't see any way we could schedule it for twenty-four. But I think we can definitely, uh, push for it to plug it in.
How about if we schedule it for twenty-five?
Pardon?
How about if we schedule it for twenty-five?
I don't know if there's...
Or twenty-six. I don't, I may be wrong, but to me, what we're saying here is we're taking it off. It's no longer scheduled. For the next five years.
I guess I would just say that it's still on our CIP. Obviously, we, we went through our CIP meetings, and we just kinda knew where we're at from a financial standpoint, that we're not ready for it in two thousand and twenty-four. But that doesn't mean we're, we couldn't be ready for it in two thousand and twenty-five. But things need to change as far as, obviously, our revenues continue to, to climb, but expenses are through the roof right now. And as a city, we just can't, we can't afford this. I think we're all sit up here, I've got young kids that, we spent a half our summer down at, down at that, um, ballpark. And I know the issues that there is with it, too. It just, until we get to a point where we can afford this, we just, we're kinda strapped right now in two thousand and twenty-four.
I would just remind the council that just because something's not on the CIP doesn't mean you can't add, do a project in a year. It's a plan, and maybe you'll have a big donor that wants to give you a bunch of money, and you can certainly do the project. Or you decide you don't have to do something and the money comes. So, this is a plan to give you an idea of things when you're trying to work through your budget. So, doesn't mean you can't do it if you decide the funding's there within a year.
And I think people need to know, part of the problem is that costs have doubled in the past two years, and we gotta pick and choose which projects we can do. I mean, it's a problem right now, so...
Good time to promote, spend in Brandon, right? Spend in Brandon, that's the only way we can ever do these things. I know we all struggle at times going into Sioux Falls to spend our money. But like many business owners in this town, if we can spend our money in Brandon, these things can, can be done faster.
Right, I would agree, too, that we can revisit this again in a year, but part of having the money to do this also goes along with what Brian was talking about with the special assessment, in that the three homeowners that are adjacent to where Ironwood be extended through would be severely impacted with the assessment added to their property. So, they, they would be responsible for paying a share of putting this road in. You know, splitting that among a hundred homeowners is one thing, but splitting that share of this expense across three homeowners is really gonna be impacting towards them. So, we'd have to get creative in, in how we do that.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion is second to approve the amended CIP list. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, number three on administration is the Aspen Ridge preliminary plan.
Russell Atkins eight-three-zero-four, South Timber Oak Circle, Sioux Falls. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, thank you so much, uh, for letting me present to you a preliminary plan. I'm here today, uh, with a business partner, Eric Christiansen, and another business partner, Amy Folsom. We are delighted, um, to present this plan to you. Um, I will tell you, Christiansen Development, I've said this last several times that I've got up here, and, and, and we mean it, so I'm gonna repeat it. We believe we're enhancing lives and communities, uh, through being smart and responsible development practices. That goes way back into, into who we are, and, and I just wanted to bring that up. And, you know, we first brought our first community meeting, uh, last Tuesday, um, to a group at the Brandon Golf Course, and got to listen to some of your residents of this town, and, and some of the passion, please that they've got, and, and some of the concerns that they've got. And, and we were grateful, um, that they would take their, their night and spend with us. It was a beautiful night. And so, the fact that they were, uh, with us was, was, um, an asset. And, and we took those seriously. Uh, we've written them all down, uh, we've talked about them as an ownership group. Um, we met with the city staff today, uh, to go over several of them. I've got another, uh, meeting set up tomorrow, go through my engineering group, uh, to also discuss, uh, the concerns. A lot of them you've heard, um, through the last couple of meetings as well. Uh, we scheduled today, uh, another follow-up for that community meeting. We will be sending out, uh, far more notices and all of that for next Tuesday at the same place, same time. So, that'll be at the Brandon Golf Course at seven o'clock to eight o'clock. Uh, so that's where we can, uh, visit with them further and, and go through more items. I will tell you, I started doing construction and development a long time ago. And, um, when I started out, I did things a certain way, only to realize I was doing it wrong. I was in a tunnel. I was focused on my project, I was focused on the thing that was in front of me, and I wasn't really looking at the bigger good, uh, that we were doing. And once, as I got a little older, a little more gray hair, I, I realized the benefit of looking more globally. And so, being able to partner, um, with a town that's got a comp plan and got a vision and, and things like that, um, i- is critical. Your town is growing. It's growing a lot. You've got great people here. You've got a great school system here. You got a lot of people that wanna live here, they wanna share that dream, that American dream of homeownership and, and living in a community where their kids thrive. You know, that's, uh, I can tell you, I grew up, uh, my mother, single mother, raised me and my sister, um, by herself. We didn't have a lot, you know? Um, it, by the grace of God, and I mean that literally, uh, we had a house, a roof over our head. But we rented, you know? I married a woman, um, who also had the same scenario. Her and her brothers, um, were raised by a single mom, and, um, they were raised in apartments. You know, um, they all three went on to play division-one sports. Well, she's a twenty-seven-year lawyer. The other two, uh, have businesses, and I think they put some asphalt on you guys' roads here, um, this last school round. So, uh, a, a, a community that has a lot of different housing is important to a growing community, and a vibrant community. Um, and, and a home for a lot of people. And what we're gonna present to you tonight is one that does that very thing. And it follows along with your comp plan, um, and, and how you're looking for a diverse group of housing, one that's got a lot of different types. We also have, so, my, our project, um, is named Aspen Ridge. It's ninety-three acres. It's south of the golf course. It's planned to have two general business lots on it. Uh, the rest would be residential. Based in that residential, we've got multiple zones. We've got roughly six-point-seven acres, um, up buffering the commercial. Multifamily, zoned R-three. Uh, we also have ten acres of town homeland, zoned R-two. That kinda offers a, a drop in density as you're coming away from those busy corners. We've got fifty-six patio homes, they're single-family lots, um, but because of kind of a low-maintenance lifestyle, uh, with the gentlemen that's wanting to build on these, the lot sizes are such that they fit into an R-two category versus an R-one. But they are single-family lots. Uh, we've got eleven twin-home lots or duplex lots, um, that are also up against Aspen Boulevard. Then we follow that up with sixty-nine lots for single-family lots, as you can see on the site plan there. The other thing that we're very, very thrilled with and, and very happy about is we've got just shy of fourteen acres of proposed parks, um, site that we'd be proposing to give over to the city. We are also proposing, uh, splash park or splash pad, I think is the right terminology, um, in that area. Pickleball courts, uh, is also something that, that we're entertaining and proposing. Looking at a, a trail-type system through there, uh, so people can get out and walk. So, that's our project. I can tell you, um, we've put a lot of time and energy into it, but I'm sure there's questions. Some of the comments that, that came out in our community meeting surrounded the ability, excuse me, the ability to have water service there. Uh, we have visited, uh, with Tammy and have been assured that with the new water tower, um, those concerns should be mitigated. Um, we've got, uh, sanitary sewer concerns, um, for the area, that we've worked diligently with our engineering group, um, DGR, for a lift station that would accomplish those goals. And I believe there's even, uh, a, a, a plan that they've dealt with, with Tammy and staff, um, at which to do some improvements, if you will, to the golf course lift station to help with some of the issues that are going on there. I can let them speak to that if, because it gets over my head pretty quick. Um, we've got some storm, um, water, uh, concerns that were raised, uh, that we're also, uh, doing our best to mitigate. Uh, we've got a, a RCP that's planned to be piped from the, uh, flared-end section that comes through under Aspen, then would be piped, um, all the way down South Chestnut Boulevard, and then in, back into the sub, the subdivision to a water, water quality control pond, uh, where that water would be released at a controlled rate. So, we got quite a few things that, that we're looking at, um, uh, to, to help with the area. At that, I'll open it up for questions.
Yeah, Russ, we're at five minutes. A little plus, we're a little plus five minutes.
I, I get a little long-winded.
So, anybody got a quick question? I think we've seen everything with the plan. It's been, uh, approved by our engineering department, so I think we...
Just, just curiosity question on the apartments. How many, how many units are you typically talking, and are these gonna be market value?
Pardon?
Are these gonna be market value?
So, we've got two particular in, uh, interested companies looking at the apartment land. Neither one of them have talked about anything other than market value apartments. They're looking through the site plan and how many that would fit there. I just don't know. Um, I have developed apartments in the past, so from my perspective, I could give a guess, but I don't know if I'd be doing the, the applicant that would ultimately be coming in front of you with a site plan to, to show how they wanted to lay it out, any service. But it's six-point-seven acres. A hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty units, I think, could fit there, but it all depends upon the size of the buildings, and I'm anticipating it's three-story. But again, I, I would have to defer to them.
Okay. Anybody else to speak to this issue?
I've got one other important topic that I forgot to bring up, um, the traffic study.
Five minutes is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, TJ Cameron, two-eight-two-one, East Daybreak Circle, Brandon. Um, I just wanted to address the current subject on the agenda. Couple of things, I'm definitely pro-growth for Brandon, and I know we need some areas to increase, and I'm definitely not here to stop another annex. Um, we need an area to grow, so there's no doubt about that. But I think we need to grow calculated and a pace that sticks to our most valued qualities, our residents' value and love about Brandon themselves. We recently declined our three apartments on Redwood, which were near and by, um, twin homes and townhomes already. So, when we look at this layout, that's a similar example here. The difference that I see here is that I do know our comprehensive plan very well, and it was written in two thousand and fourteen. Um, and I know we may be updating it, but at the time that plan was written, thirty-one-point-five percent was single-family, and the long-term plan was sixty-two-point-two percent of the existing use. Three-point-two percent was multifamily, there were no defined multifamily. It just only defined it as residential only in our comprehensive plan, so we can't determine the mix based on that direction. It just defined it as residential only. The difference I see is the three-point-two percent multifamily at the time we wrote the comprehensive plan. This development alone, if you look at that yellow and red, I mean, I haven't calculated the exact percentage, but it looks like around fifty percent, maybe a little bit more. The multifamily at the time the comprehensive plan was written was three-point-two percent. That, I thought it was sixteen, so I apologize if it was six acres. Regardless, six-point-seven acres for R-three is more than double what even the future comprehensive plan outlined. Um, from the three-point-two percent at the time, it did show an increase in, in residential, but it did not define multifamily. But growing at a pace, I know we need more multifamily residential. I have a business by here where that R-three would benefit me. The higher the population near where my business is would actually benefit me. So, I'm not, and I live far enough away where it doesn't affect my quality of living. But I have a fireworks store not too far from there, the higher the population near me, the more sales I'm gonna have. So, I want you to know when I speak against the size of that R-three, I'm, could potentially be hurting my own value and my own sales. I'm not on that lot. There's a misconception that some people think I'm on this area, I'm not. I'm on the property that's, uh, on the other side of the Grabber Road, on the top-left corner of that screen. So, I just wanna make sure that that's clear. Um, three-point-eight percent commercial, this new, um, development is about seven-point-five percent. Industrial, at the time, we were eight-point-three, this is eleven-point-six, which is nice, 'cause that was some planned stuff to the east that was gonna be, um, the, uh, park and open space. The one thing I will commend them on is at the time, it was thirteen-point-nine, and it looks like approximately a good portion of this is dedicated. However, the council, I believe, and you might wanna ask your legal counsel, has the ability to pass this with conditions. And I heard a splash pad, potentially promised, trails, the park, and potentially pickleball. So, those are things that sometimes you need to hold a, a developer accountable to, um, when we're planning these kind of developments. You know, I, too, was raised by a single mom. Uh, my mom was a single family, worked fifty-five hours a week rotating shifts, so I definitely respect that gentleman and his history. Um, she had, she herself also rented a single-family home when I was growing up, and then found homeownership. But it's not impossible, we never lived in, we never lived in an apartment, and I'm not totally against apartment, I just look at the percentage of this property. Our definition in the, in the comprehensive plan says that R-three is apartments. R-two is single, or is duplexes and twin homes. In the comprehensive plan, you can check it yourself at the time this was written. But when you allow it with no conditions to that percentage, I know there's a plan, but the developers are developing the land to sell the land. They're not the ones that are gonna build these properties. They're defining over fifty percent of this property to be res, multifamily residential. Again, I'd encourage you to check with legal counsel what that means, um, because it's a little bit different. Our, our, our planning and zoning quoted the plan and the requirement for us to stick to it, and the plan reflects those numbers I shared with you earlier. The plan also outlines policies that our, the community intended to follow going forward, including, and I'm timing myself, by the way, but including, um, commercial being developed near existing commercial areas and trying to concentrate it there, and it specifically outlines not spreading it out all over the place. This particular plat, in that comprehensive plan, shows about one of those two purple, which I understand there could be some variation. But just to let you know, you should probably review that if you're considering a vote today. Today, uh, I heard somebody quote six percent commercial, twenty-six percent multifamily, and sixty-eight percent single-family. I'm not quite sure where that came from, but what I gave you in statistics came from your own comprehensive plan that was written in December of two thousand and fourteen. Um, so I just encourage that we don't jam all this down in one development, that we slowly increase the multifamily allocation of property, and take a really hard look at the multifamily R-three, because that's higher than the entire percentage of our current use and what was planned in the prior use for all multifamily. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else wanna speak to this issue? Council have any comments?
Uh, can we, can we ask Russell a couple of other questions? Just, uh, based on some of the...
Yes.
So, Russ, um, just a couple of the questions that came out of, uh, some of the conversation and the comments. Could you walk us through how this plan was designed? You know, one of the gentlemen that spoke asked the question, you know, why, why were the, the, uh, R-three, the apartments put where they're put, and the single-family put where they're put on this design? I'm not a developer or an engineer, so, help me understand how this plan was developed, maybe.
Sure, glad to. So, in, in looking at the plan, looking at the acreage, looking at the master plan, raising, reading housing studies, we kinda followed, uh, with Aspen Boulevard being, uh, a major arterial, uh, that's the logical place for the general business locations to be. I believe you even call up the master plan, that you want to cluster, uh, some of the general businesses together, uh, at major intersections. If you look at the comp plan, I believe there's general business on four, or three of the four corners, uh, so that fit well. And, and in an effort to buffer, uh, the future residential... an effort to buffer the future residential from the, the general business, normally you put some of your higher densities next to the general business, and then you kind of ratchet it down as you get into the community. And so the multifamily sitting at about six and a half acres, some of it's market-driven on what people are looking for. You know, it's, it's one thing to build the apartments, it's another thing to manage them. And so having proper amenities and things in the apartment is, is important, right? You want activities for everybody to, to do. And usually around that 130 to 150 range, an operator can come in and manage that site and have amenities and things for its residents. The townhomes is another step down in density. We went with the R2 instead of the R3 on the townhomes to make the building smaller. The area is aligned such that you could put two or three different types of townhomes in there, differing in size, that would also differ in price points. Then we stepped even further down. The patio villa area was an area where the sanitary sewer was fairly shallow, so it was limited as far as what uses could go in there. This fit a very good use, especially with the parks being there. The parks, there's wetlands along the south, and so we had those delineated. We wanted to protect them. We're not impeding on them. Then we wanted to also incorporate the water quality control ponds. That's hard to, just to say. And then we also wanted a park that turned into discussions with the city about a city park. The single-family, when you take a look at the lots that are back there, they're going to be gorgeous. And, and the topo works with them, so those fit in fine. And then we wanted just a little bit more buffer as you came in off of Aspen Boulevard, which that's where the duplex lot set.
Did I answer your question?
That is, that one additional question for Russ. You said that you're not developing the apartments. Would, would you and Eric Christensen be developing and building the homes then, the single-family, and maybe the duplex twin homes that are going out there?
The, the vision would be that trademark homes would more than likely build several single-family homes in there, but not all 69 of them. They would be opened up for sale for people to bring in their own builder. Actually, we have builders that approach us, have approached us that might want to come in and buy several, because they've got homes that they'd like to build. That's kind of the program that works, that we've done, and is anticipated here.
Great. Thank you, Russell.
Okay. Any other discussion on the part of the council or the public? Sure.
Good evening. Laura Shane Carbonneau, 201 South Country Club Avenue. And I appreciate the opportunity for listening to public input. I also appreciate the information given by the prospective developer. I have another question, probably more directed towards city staff. We've heard that there are opportunities that our group will have to give additional input as the project moves forward. I'm wondering specifically what those points of intersection are and what would the potential outcomes be of those discussions?
Couple of different opportunities. This is the preliminary plan. It, it shows what the developer would like to request for zoning. Once the zoning application is submitted, and I think it has been, there'll be a public hearing in front of the city, or in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. There'll be another public hearing in front of the city council, and then two readings of the ordinance to rezone the property. In addition to that, the R3 allows for up to a 36-plex to be built as a permitted use. Anything over that requires a conditional use, which is another public hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, at which time certain conditions can be placed on the permit.
Brian, can you also talk about the confusion on the letters we're sending out?
Sure. We received an application for a rezone of the parcel as part of, we send out letters to everybody within 300 feet, just like we do with conditional uses and variances. That also has to be posted in the Brandon Valley Journal, which is a legal newspaper for the city. We found out the next day that the publication was not in the paper. It was submitted on time. It was assured that it would be in there, but it was not placed. So we sent out letters to those property owners. We got letters the first time around with the hearing being canceled, because we could not hold the hearing because it was not published in the paper.
Can you also speak to whether or not it's required by state law to mail out those notifications?
It is, it is not required under state law.
And Brian, could you remind me, we just went through this on Stone Ridge, but I can't remember right now, but anything that's on R2, what, what can go on there? Is that four-plexes, oh, eight-plexes?
Single-family up to four-plex are permitted use, and then an eight-plex would be a conditional use.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I would have a couple more questions. I don't know if it needs to be Russell or if the city, city can do that. But again, I think some of the, some of the, at least a little bit of my concerns, and I guess some from the, that you're, we're hearing from residents too, is just on property utilities in that area that, hey, we can, we can do this. As a city, you know, we're ready, we're ready for a development like this in this, in this area. I would like that, that question kind of answered. Are we at a point that, hey, if this goes through, we're between the lift stations and being able to send everything to the, the golf course, are we, are we at, at that ability?
Yep. If you've noticed, we are still working on that water tower, but it is the 1.25 million gallon water tower. They are painting it right now. Painting takes about six to eight weeks, depending on weather. Then we will start doing some testing, so we hope to have that water tower fully functional by the end of August. That is the goal. That will increase the pressures for the town on the east, or east of the golf course. And so I know in the comprehensive plan, it says that it's, those water pressures are going to be under, under what they should be still, and we'd have to use our booster station, but that design has changed quite a bit in the last couple of years. That new water tower is now going to be about 100 feet taller than our existing water tower, and so those pressures are much higher. That is why we put those pressure-reducing valves in every home east of the golf course. So they will be above that. So for the most part, all those homes will have over 80 PSI, and that pressure-reducing valve will bring that back down. So there will not be any more concerns on the pressure, as well as we are also doubling the size of our water treatment plant, and that should be online in 2025. As far as the sewer, we have worked with different engineers to figure out a plan on that. We're going to do some little tweaks to our existing system to where we can use our existing infrastructure until we do grow to the point where we need that new lift station down by McCarty Park. They're putting in their own private lift station, which will be turned over to the city once it's fully installed and working correctly. And we will have to do some upgrades to the golf course lift station as well. But it is all in the plan, and the developer is paid for it.
Tammy, can we address the traffic concerns that are going out there? You know, on Split Rock, obviously, there's nothing that we can do. That's, that's, that's a state highway. But on, on Aspen there, by Country Club and by Chestnut, can you address some of those concerns and how we could remediate that, because that's a lot of traffic?
Yep. So Aspen and Split Rock, that has been a lot of discussion in the last couple of years. We worked with the DOT to do that corridor study, and that was a group project with the city of Sioux Falls, and us, and anyhow, county, and some other agencies like Federal Highway. Throughout that corridor study, they did indicate that it would be the least expensive option to put it around about. There's been a lot of talk about when the DOT would do that project. It is stated on the split for 2028, but the project moment and the cost of it has not been determined. So there's been a lot of conversations on that, because they were going to take it from pipe or from Aspen Boulevard to Highway 42. And I'd really like them to add it in from Aspen to Redwood. Like, we have some greenage concerns there. We have to work through some culvers. So we're working on that, and there's been a lot of discussions there. But as of right now, that intersection would be 2028, if it's around about. The developer did do a traffic study.
Is your ear awake on?
No. Sorry. Oh, that one's on.
Somebody hit the button.
So they hired HDR to do the traffic study. We've gone back and forth on a few items on that. They are planning on putting in those right turn lanes for their development. There will also be some intersection improvements that would need to happen to Sunshine, Sunshine in Aspen and Chestnut in Aspen. We're working through some of those options right now, because that's kind of a bigger picture with the new school and the other development as well. So we're working on some of those traffic issues, but overall, that road is still the county's authority. So once it's annexed into the city, then we can start making some different decisions there, too.
Okay. Any other discussion on the part of the council or the public?
I guess I would just, one last time, just so everybody can understand, can you walk us through this process? Obviously, whatever happens here today, they're not, they're not breaking ground tomorrow. So if you could just walk everybody through this process and understand, so they, so they know they can all, everybody can have their voices, voices be heard no matter what as we go through this.
Well, the, the next step would be the rezone, well, the annexation would need to take place, and they've submitted a revised petition for annexation from the property owners. A rezone would need to take place for the R3, the, well, all of it, the entire parcel. DEP's design engineering plans will need to be submitted and reviewed by city staff, and that really gets down into the, the fine new detail of pipe sizes, sewer depths, manhole depths, et cetera. Am I missing anything? TIF is, is going to be requested, tax and grant financing to pay for some of the, the public infrastructure. And then plat.
One additional thing. I'm sorry to continue to belabor this, but Brian, one of the gentlemen that spoke at the P&amp;Z meeting on Thursday spoke, he, on the next slide, oh, actually on this slide, he's a person that's directly adjacent to the east there. He's got some concerns about a well that may be in the right-of-way for the, for Chestnut extension, and concerns about where his lot line lies compared to where this project lies. How do we address that and, and make sure that he's whole, essentially?
As far as lot lines, the, the property surveyed as part of the, the preliminary plan, the DEPs, it's all surveyed. Corner stakes are put in place. The well, I'd have to defer to the developer on that.
I spoke to Mr. Medeski today. He's got a day job. I stopped during, during the day, misting. Him and his wife are going to give me three or four times this next week that work for them to sit down and go through things. Very cordial, very nice guy. But he does have a concern about where his well's at, where the property lines are at, his trees that are there along the right-of-way. I'm going to get all of his concerns, and we'll address every one of them.
Any other discussion?
Sorry, first-timer. Ryan Tisdale, 2571 Westlake Drive. I just wanted to come and talk. I'm the, the real estate broker who's selling the commercial land and the multifamily land out of this development. I'm not the developer, but I'm the broker selling these parcels. Just wanted to share that I worked with Eric Christensen on a large-scale development that he did in Sioux Falls a couple of years ago on Marion Road next to Jefferson High School. A development called Jefferson Heights that was really similar in terms of mix of uses, a blend of commercial, multifamily, twin home, single-family, really kind of mirrored this in a sense of how it had a lot of green space throughout the development. Nice amenities. You know, I'm watching what's happening with that development as it's really come to life since all of our approvals a couple of years ago. And he's really done a nice job with it. You know, the, the homes being built are attractive. His covenants, you know, protect that. You know, we've seen great commercial users like Scooters Coffee and Dairy Queen and Ace Hardware and commercial users like that buying land and, you know, expanding on the west side of Sioux Falls. And in my experience, what Eric said he was going to do is what he has done. And I, I know the proof is always in the pudding, but I wanted to share that, you know, as I've worked with Eric for several years, he's always, he's always delivered on the promises that he's made, whether it's to a tenant in a building or a community on a development such as this. So anyway, I just wanted to share that, you know, I, I like the way the development is designed. In my experience, you know, when you have a quality engineer like DGR and working with city staff, you know, I've never seen them, you know, grant building permits on things that, you know, as we, people talk about traffic and drainage and utilities, and, you know, they're not going to grant building permits on something that doesn't make sense, that the city can't handle. The, the group that's pursuing the purchase of the multifamily land here is a really quality developer. They're a quality property manager. They have, you know, an extensive track record versus, you know, in my line of business, sometimes I see some of these fly-by-night multifamily developers, and I can tell you that it is not one of them. It is a, a very established group that is working on the purchase of the multifamily land. And one of the commercial corners, we're working with a very established regional retail operation that runs a first-class operation. So I'm really excited to see it come together, and if you have any questions, I'm certainly able to answer. But just wanted to share that, as I've worked with Eric in the past, it's been a very positive experience.
Okay, Ryan. Turn your speaker off. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Motion, second to approve the preliminary plan, Aspen Ridge preliminary plan. Any last discussion?
No, I just asked, I would just ask the public to continue to be a part of this, be a part of this. Come to the meetings. They're, they're, we as a city want to do a better job of open line of communication, and I think that's important. So getting involved in the, in the upcoming process, no matter what happens here now, I would just ask that they would can, continue to do it. We need, we need input. I know you say it, maybe you think it falls on deaf ears at times, but I'm telling you, it doesn't. I can at least speak for myself, but we need input.
Any other discussion on the part of the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to streets. We have the work report on page 85, and we have the Rushmore Project Pay App number two. I'll look for a motion on the Rushmore Project Pay App.
Second.
Motion, second to approve. Any other discussion? Excuse me?
Chris, make the motion?
Yep, sorry.
Just wanted to throw it out there.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Water and sewer, we've got a water treatment plant pay application on page 92 to 101. I'll look for a motion.
So move. Second.
Motion, second to approve the water treatment plant pay application. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Any need for an executive session?
No executive session.
No executive session, then I will call this meeting adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion, second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Seems like I ought to just be able to adjourn it. Seems like I ought to just be able to adjourn it.